I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Court, please call the roll.
Mayor March?
Here.
Trustee Bowden?
Here.
Trustee Hudson?
Here.
Trustee Jones? Ms. Batson? Shelley Marovka? Trustee Marovka?
Here.
That's okay. Trustees Slus?
Here.
And Trustees Dervin?
Here.
All right, public comment. All right, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda today is approving the minutes of the August 8, 2022 Regular Village Board Meeting. Our payroll accounts payable, approve a raffle permit application to Wilmington DFW. I'm going to pull the special event permit for the Old Mill Fall Fest and move that down to new business because I think we've got some people that want to give us some information about that. As far as the payroll and accounts payable, the gross or the payroll total for the pay period ending 8/6/2022 is $48,402.71. Accounts payable for the pay period ending 8/19 includes $31,788.55 from our general fund, $9,224 from our BBD fund, and $922 from our TIF number one fund for a total of $41,934.55. There is a correction in the minutes. Under the Aqua report, it said Angie sent the resident to call Mayor March. It's actually the other way around. I had a resident call me and I referred her to Angie and she took care of the issue. So with that correction, is there a motion? Well, I'm only asking, is there any other items in the consent agenda that the trustees would like to remove? If not, I'll give the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion, second.
Moved by trustee Marovka, second by trustee Slus.
Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Marovka?
Yes.
Trustee Slus?
Yes.
Trustee Dervin?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to staff reports. Administrator report?
I don't have anything reported in my paper report.
There is a blood drive August 29th that's coming up. That'll be at the fire department. Police chief, anything?
It's school time, full fairtime. I don't know if any other things could be going on. And this week, you have in there a proposal for purchasing squads later on.
Yep, we've talked about that.
Trying to save a little bit of money if we get the orders in. Because the 2003s are going to take a while, like next year at this time where they come in.
Right.
And I've already talked to the mill about getting parking over there at Wilmington. So we, you know, that's no big deal. And I think that's it.
Perfect. Public Works, Bob.
I'm glad I got before you, Bob.
Just a few updates. The MFT street surf thing is complete. Just waiting on the striping. This will also include oil. The school's requested additional striping. Not sure what they want over there. Because there is no crosswalks that lead to a crosswalk, so it's kind of going to be tough to put in what they want. So I'm still kind of getting some information from them, but I told them I'll put in whatever they need to make that a little safer over on Garfield. The gas line on railroad should start this week. I've been told numerous times. It's all staked out and ready to go. All of the dates, we're getting that time for leaf collection. I don't really want to talk about it, but come to that soon. I'll have it for the next meeting. And me and my staff, you'll notice at the park downtown, you'll see some few items out there. We've built those, set them in place, so I kind of get moving on that. The plantings, we're kind of waiting on the weather because it seems it's going to get hot again, so.
Too hot, yeah.
Yeah, so I think we'll wait on that until it gets a little cooler. So that's what I got.
Great. Any questions?
I do have a question. I don't know if the people are aware, but there is a house on the, it's like down Corrine and Conrad, I think. It has all the branches out front. I know they're too big. Have the people been notified that they need to be smaller?
So, good point. Every time, you'll notice piles that are left. Everybody receives a door hanger and how to correct them. Then we make a list in the truck we keep so that we know for down the road.
Because I've been seeing it there for quite a while and I was wondering if they were notified. Okay.
So. One thing I want to remind, I noticed today when I was driving here. Remind your kids when they're riding bicycles or skateboards or scooters, I know we've all heard it, look both ways at corners. It seems they've darted out in front of me today without looking, so remind your kids. Thanks.
Thanks, Bob.
Yep.
All right, Troy, what do you got?
Bob covered a couple things I wanted to talk about unless there's any questions, let me know.
So just wanted to update. We had a request from Will County to look at the speed now that we have a crosswalk in there. And they did do a study. They had somebody sit out there and measure traffic and they said that the speed isn't high enough for them to consider lowering the speed limit. And there wasn't enough traffic going across for them to.
Wasn't enough pedestrian traffic?
Wasn't enough pedestrian, yeah. So something we'll follow up on and, you know, maybe have them do it again in another year or so. All right, Angie, Aqua report?
So we are going to be emptying the tower of Lincoln this week. So they're going to either empty tomorrow or Wednesday and our engineering department is going to contact with fire department. We did, I did talk with them last week as well regarding it. So the final completion date for both towers is set for end of October, so the firm that's doing both towers will be done in October. I'm more confident now that we're well on our way this week with getting them done actually because I feel like I've been updating you guys on this for a bit. So any questions regarding the tower being, it should be down for about probably a week and a half to two weeks, so. Should be no disruptions to anybody though.
Good. All the trustees have gotten the note from Aqua about this with the changeover in water that maybe we're getting closer to that? I mean, do you have anything else to report on that?
No, that's all headed in the right direction. I don't have any additional updates on that though. And I can talk with you and how you'd like to do that going forward as we do get updates. I bring it to you and then we can, but it would probably be good to, you know, meet with the group a few times as we progress.
Okay.
But yeah.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
Any questions or no? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Do not have a treasurer's report, so it moves on to my comments. I've got a few things I want to talk about. My chief talked about the Will County fairs this week because there'd be a lot of traffic in town. You know, the town is looking great, so downtown visitors are going to see how nice things are here. I wanted to update the board. I did attend a meeting at Governor State University a couple of weeks ago where the South Suburban Airport was discussed. The proponents of construction now believe that a cargo-only airport is feasible. Although there was lots of discussion, nothing new was said. Doesn't seem like the project will go anywhere without the blessing of Governor Pritzker and so far he hasn't done anything with that. Although I'm not personally in favor of the project, you know, I just, I'll continue to attend the meetings, make sure the village, you know, has a seat at the table if there's any future developments. As Bob said, the second street pocket park is proceeding. Warner Landscaping did a great job on the pavers in the pet area. The fence was put in. Public Works installed the benches. Garbage can and bike racks. We're still waiting on the delivery of planters. And like I said, we're probably going to wait till September or October to put the shrubs and trees in. Phase one of the downtown remodel should start shortly. We've been waiting for Nycor to relocate a shallow gas main on the railroad street. This is supposed to get started this week. Once that's complete, Iroquois paving has been contracted to redo the street sidewalk and parking area from Main to North Street. And Troy says he's still confident that that can be completed by this fall. Once they get started, it should be relatively quick. I wanted to give everybody an update on the downtown streetscape revitalization. Refresh everybody's memory, this started in early 2021. CMAP did a survey of our residents and revitalized our downtown's infrastructure. Business mix was a number one priority. The board engaged a design firm, Upland Design, to study our existing downtown, gather community input, and present a downtown streetscape remodel. After extensive input from the public and board members, where preservation of parking was a high priority, the board gave the okay for a one-way street plan with angled parking. After further review, the current board approved a concept design keeping two-way traffic in angled parking while trying to reduce the width of traffic lanes to allow slightly wider sidewalks. A grant opportunity by the state was announced in the last quarter of 2021. The board engaged Upland Design to submit an application on our behalf. To make our application more attractive to the state, we pledged $500,000 from our general fund while asking for approximately 2.5 million of grant money from the state. This gives us a total of about $3 million to complete our streetscape redesign on the following downtown streets. Main Street from the railroad to First Street. Second Street from Main to Crawford and North from Second to Railroad. Our engineering firm is working on a drawing from our concept plan so the board can approve the final design engineering. We hope they have that for the board soon. Once the board gives the okay, we will have Robinson Engineering complete the engineering and construction documents. Our goal is to have the project bid out in the winter so construction can take place in 2023. So in case you haven't heard, I mean, we did obtain that grant. It's a huge win for the village. There's a lot of people I want to thank that made this a successful application. First of all, I want to thank Upland Design for putting together a very professional complete grant application. There's no way we could have done this, could have done as well on our own. I also want to thank the board for having the desire and forethought to proceed with the downtown streetscape plan. I think the fact that we had a design in place meant that we could proceed with a complete professional grant application. I want to thank the public and business community for their support and input throughout the process. Their input was crucial to our design and demonstrated to the state that our project had the backing of the community. We had many letters of support attached to the grant application and showing support to stakeholders and local governing bodies. These included letters from the school district, park district, businesses downtown, the library district, and chamber of commerce. We also received support of our state senator Patrick Joyce and state representative Jackie Haas. Finally, I wanted to thank our administrator Amy Ingles for her guidance, organization support on this project. Without her, this grant would not have been successful. We can have a moment of celebration and then we got to get back to work. This is going to be a big project for the community. We require the backing, guidance of the board, the village administrative staff, public works, and Robinson and Jerry to make this successful. Of course, all this will be happening while the travel center, the largest project in our history, is being built along I-57. So it's going to be busy and productive next 18 months. Finally, I just wanted to recognize Judy Hostel. She just recently sold her business downtown. She's been a big part of our downtown business community for many years. And on behalf of the board, I just want to thank her for her years of service and wish her well in whatever her endeavors have. And that is it for my comments.
Can I piggyback on that? Mayor, I think that there was an ad hoc downtown committee?
Yes.
And they really did a lot of detailed work and worked hard to put together a lot of the information for the engineers. I would say personally, thank you to them.
Yes, agree. All right, on to old business. We have none, new business, so I want to go ahead and talk about the special event permit for the Old Mill Fall Fest. Sunday, September 18, 2022, street closing from Conrad to Mill. So anybody from the historic side want to talk about it at all or?
I don't know. Basically, this is the 20th anniversary of it this year. So we're going to have like a civil war kind of reenactment down there. It's something a little bit different than we've had before.
Cool.
So kind of hopefully bring some new fresh people around and.
While they got you here, did you guys have that structural engineering study done up at deck?
So when I came to November and I got the okay from you guys, I sent the email and called Bruce himself. And I haven't heard back from him, so I called him a month ago and he said he never received my email or anything. So we were back at start point there.
Okay. All right.
But so hopefully next year we'll get started on that.
Okay, great. Hours for the Fall Fest?
Eleven to four.
Eleven to four, great. Any questions from the board? Nat, motion to approve?
Motion, second.
Moved by trustee Marovka, second by trustee Dervin.
Great, thank you.
Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Marovka?
Yes.
Trustee Slus?
Yes.
Trustee Dervin?
Yes.
All right, next up is presentation by Trajectory Energy Partners. So this group contacted me, wanted to come give us a presentation about a solar panel park just south of town. So I will give the Florida. Thank you, Mayor. This is John Carson. Yes, I will flip this range here real quick. And a little bit of information real quick for everybody.
That's okay.
So I'm John Carson. I'm the managing partner of Trajectory Energy Partners and we are, guys. We are working on a community solar project here in the Piattone area. The project is not inside the village limits. It's about three quarters of a mile south of the village limits. But as part of our outreach project, we just wanted to give you a brief presentation tonight so that if you have any questions or your constituents have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. And one thing you'll see in the packet I'll mention upfront is that we are going to hold an open house for the project on September 21st at the atrium at the fairgrounds. So please feel free to pass my contact information around to anyone who would have questions. Tell them about the open house. We left a stack for here at the village office as well. So I'll be very brief, but happy to answer any questions. Feel free to interrupt me as we go. So this project that we're working on Prairie Solar, we are working with the Rubek family. Some of you probably know Steve and his family. This is on 28 acres, about three quarters of a mile southwest of town. On this map here, it would be right here. So about three quarters from there. So as part of the zoning process, because it's within a mile and a half of the village, you will be notified officially by Will County, but don't have to take any action because it's outside of the village limits. Just to sort of put this in context, Illinois has passed a number of state laws to promote renewable energy here in Illinois. They come in sort of three different categories. I imagine you've all seen some residents here in Piattone who've put solar on their own roof or perhaps the school. That's called behind-the-meter solar where it's directly powering that facility. The other end of the scale here in northern Illinois, we will see some very large utility scale projects. Those are actually typically over 1,000 acres hooked up to the very high voltage line that runs through Illinois. But what we're working on and what Prairie Solar is, is a community solar project. So that's five megawatts or under, typically 30 or 40 acres. And this helps lower utility bill costs directly for residents here in Illinois. Slide four, just to explain how that works, these projects put the renewable energy directly onto the COMED grid. And then someone, a resident who maybe can't do solar on your own roof, a school, a business, they can be a subscriber to the project and see savings directly on their bill. The advantage of community solar over putting solar on your own roof is that there's no costs upfront and you see the savings as the project produces energy. Our company, Trajectory Energy Partners, we're an Illinois-based company. I live in Lake County. We have staff across the state, have worked on projects across the state. Closest one we've developed near here that is up and running is Gar Creek Solar. That's just south of Kane Kaki on Airport Road. If you wanted to go check one of those out. That one's about the same size, just a little bit bigger than this one will be. So we are going through the zoning process with Will County. Will County has zoned a number of these projects. We put our design together according to code. This, Steve and I were talking, this is probably literally the least traveled road in all of Will County. It's a dead end and it's right there at 57. And we've begun reaching out to the closest neighbors, but I did want to let everyone know about it here at the village in case you get questions. If you were standing at that far southern southwest end of Piattone and were to look in this direction, you probably need binoculars to really see the project at three quarters of a mile. This project will be what's called a single-axis tracker system. That means the panels will be on 100-yard-long rows that turn slowly during the day. They face east in the morning, turn west in the afternoon and gather about 25% more electricity that way. We will put a pollinator-friendly ground cover underneath and it's also another way to sort of orientate where it is. Is it's, these are that string of high-voltage COMED lines. We will be entirely south of where that is. And finally, the benefits that a project like this brings. So the idea of a community solar project is that this is helping residents, small businesses, government sector entities save on their utility bills. This will collectively save around $200,000 in utility bills for Will County residents. That's an example of if the village was interested in sharing information with residents on how to be a subscriber, we'd love to work with you. But it's not an obligation, something we could talk about later as the project got closer to construction. These projects do pay local property taxes according to a formula that was put together by the state. The last thing I included in your packet was a little more detail on how that works. It's typically 15 to 20 times more than the agricultural rate that's being paid. Because we are outside the village limit, unfortunately, we wouldn't be paying any direct property taxes to the village. But here in Piattone, like most places, the school district does see precinct getting increased property taxes. And then finally, on the economic development front, so all these projects that Trajectory develops, we do use Illinois Union Labor. And we are seeing quite an increase in the workforce and people having an opportunity to work on these projects. We'll be working with building trades here in the Will County area. I've got my contact information on there. We'll also be working with Hale Spray. We'll be here for the open house and reaching out to nonprofits and others. Just a little more information on what's in your deck. Also included, this document called the Solar Overview, which has just some of the more typical frequently asked questions that we hear. This picture on the cover is one of my favorites. It's not a project we developed, but this is right inside champagne. This is 54 acres that the University of Illinois had that they put solar on. A great example of how it fits into the community. So I will stop there. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
When are you going to start?
So we'll go through zoning in Will County in October if that goes smoothly. We'll apply to one of the state programs at the beginning of December, find out in February or March if it's selected. If that goes smoothly, we'd be able to start construction end of next fall. So after the crop comes off or potentially a year after.
Right, yeah, because we farm to the south of that.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
This is your farm here?
Yeah, that's the guy I work for. We farm there. We run semi trucks and everything down the.
So you've been on that road?
A lot.
Excellent.
You know exactly where it's at.
Exactly.
Well, if you wouldn't mind giving me a call, I'd love to.
I'll give it to the farmer. I'll give it to him because they'll probably get him and the landowner.
Okay, excellent. Perfect.
Just want to make sure it ain't getting in the way of harvest season.
Oh, no, we would, yeah, we would coordinate all that and once.
And the power lines over there are low too.
You probably farm around those.
Yeah, there's only certain poles we can do the auger carton and semi on the road, so.
Yeah, yeah, this, it's pretty, once construction's completed, it's a pretty light amount of traffic out there. And even during construction, we'd have a throwdown area and stay off the road. Excellent, nice to meet you. So thanks, thanks for coming in and explaining it proactively. That was great. What's the life of these? About 35 years. About 35 years, okay. And then I assume you guys, so obviously you're not going to want stuff growing above them because that would cheat them, right? So how does the maintenance work? So it's pretty intensive maintenance, even though you have the pollinator-friendly ground cover, especially at the beginning. Because we can't have anything growing above the panels. On occasion, you actually are starting to see more people actually use sheep for grazing these as well. And also related to that, one thing that will happen before we start the construction and get our building permit, we actually have to put a bond down with Will County to cover the cost of removing the system. For end of life, okay, that was my question. So you are required to put a bond down for the. That's both state law and required by Will County. Okay, great, thank you very much.
Do we also have to approve this zoning since it's the mile and a half?
No, we can make comments.
Yeah, that's my understanding, Amy, that you'll receive official notice from Will County and can either make comments or not. We'd be thrilled if you chose to support it, but that's totally up to you. And at the open house, you'll explain how the residents can or can't participate? Exactly. Okay. Yeah, under Illinois law, half of the output has to be for residential users. And we're going to commit to getting all the subscribers for this here in Will County. Any other questions? Moving on, that's as in ordinance approving a letter of engagement for engaging registered municipal advisors by the village of Piattone and the Economic Development Group. So this is in connection with the I-57 project, the road project that we're going to have to get started on in the spring. We would like to go on the bond market to get the cost of those improvements. And then they would be paid back by the TIF funds that occur once the travel center is built. So to do that, we're gauging, as part of that process, we want to engage an advisor. We're already using the Economic Development Group or EDG. You know, they are our TIF consultants. And so this is just another step to allow them to act as our registered municipal advisor. I got that correct?
Yep.
Sound good. Yeah, so whenever you do a bond deal, it's important to have this kind of municipal advisor. They're one of the key players, obviously, in this issue for bonds.
Get a look over our interest. Have a fiduciary responsibility to the village.
Okay, this would be ordinance 22-17. I'll make the motion. Oh, so I can, moved by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Hudson.
Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Marovka?
Yes.
Trustee Slus?
Yes.
Trustee Dervin?
Yes.
Next is in ordinance approving the issuance of a Class F liquor license for Max Convenience Stores, LLC, doing business as Circle K. Store number 470012 in the village of Piattone, Will County, Illinois. Common address known as 700 Oriels Ride. So this would be ordinance 22-18. A Class F liquor license is to allow video gaming and.
For?
For license.
Just required by the state law.
So they become more of like a bar area? It would look like it looks in Tonys or it has to adhere to the requirements of they, that it, you know, have a certain height of wall and be secluded and.
But they would be able to serve like a beer to somebody. In the video game area, yes.
Okay.
Not just walking around.
Okay, and then they go outside and go on 57 and drink. And then they go outside and go on 57 and drive home.
But you can't, you can't have a video game license without a bar.
Right.
That's the...
Yep.
So you have to be a bar to get a video game license, that's still weird.
That's required. We have a regulation, like do we have where there can only be so many video gaming places in town or no? Do we have something like that or no? Only in, for Class B, which is a cafe, a gaming cafe. So if they were putting out food and stuff too, that would be something else. Yeah, that's a class B.
So this would be ordinance 22-18. Is there a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Moved by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Sluse.
Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Maravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
And trustee Sturba?
Yes.
All right, next is a motion to waive competitive bidding and authorize purchase of two 2022 Ford lease-interceptor utility vehicles from McCandless Ford, price of $38,710 each. So chief, you wanna tell us how this all came about? Here you go.
Go on.
Did he leave?
We took him long.
All right, well, I'll try to tell you what I know about it. So as he said, the 2023s and the 2022s are very hard to find. He found a dealer in Ohio, right?
Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania, yeah, that had some available. And so we do have money in, what funds are these coming out of?
Just the general fund, we had one budgeted in the general fund and then we have enough available in a seizure account that we could cover.
So the chief recommended that we take advantage and get two of them because we're not sure when, you know, another one is available.
So our local dealers can't help us because they can't find it.
Yeah.
But when we get these, we'll have them serviced at the local dealers, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I think Bob ordered a truck come a month ago, September would be a year. And he still hasn't got it yet. So, and if you can find them, you better get them.
Yeah. I motion yes of your previous.
I second.
Okay, moved by trustee Maravka, second by trustee Sturba.
Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Maravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
And trustee Sturba?
Yes.
All right, any questions of the press?
Just a couple. Remind me the bonds are for improvements to 88, right? For the truck stop?
88 and also, also I-57, we're doing some work on turn lanes on Peatone Wilmington Road.
That's what I thought. And the amount you were, you were seeking for those too?
The, the amount's not definite yet, but it's probably gonna be about $3 million.
Okay. And wasn't there something in the agreement with the developer that if by chance the TIF funds did not cover the cost of the bond, he would supplement the rest?
Yes.
Yes, that's what I thought. I wanted to make sure I had that in there. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, anything else from the board?
Well, just congratulations again to everybody. I mean, I feel like we should applaud or something. Yeah, we've had some, some really good things happen here lately, so...
It's gonna be the biggest grant we've ever gotten, isn't it?
It is, oh, yes, yes.
And it's not easy to get them. It's, it's not, Amy will tell you, it's, but...
It, and we were one of 50 communities in the state that got it and, yeah, crazy.
And most of them, it looks like they, they pledged, you know, like 100% match because they, the press release said they gave out like 100 million, right, was it 100 or 50?
150.
100, but they said with matching funds, it was almost double the funds that were gonna be put. So, you know, the fact that we only pledged 500 and got 2.5, I think it's a big deal.
Yeah, I mean, you're exactly right, you gotta get out there and you've gotta meet with the politicians and let them know who you are. I would've went to that meeting a week ago if I didn't own a little...
Yeah, right.
And it is a cross, but yeah, we need to do that.
Yeah.
But congratulations, everybody, great job.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, so, yeah, we'll be working hard, I said, Troy's gonna be giving us some drawings so that the board can kind of make sure everybody's happy with kind of the final layout. And once we prove that, then they can get started on, you know, making all the construction documents.
All right, the next one we'll apply for is, is, we'll again, apply for I-Tub, see what happens. You know, we've been lucky with that one, but I think our luck is looking good, so we'll get that one in.
Yeah, so what we decide, what we're gonna do?
The sidewalk.
So we talked about extending the sidewalk in Wilmington Peatone Road, you know, making it go all the way to Rancher McDonald's.
With, with maybe the eventual plan of trying to incorporate our, our railroad bed eventually because they really like that in the I-Tub. So kind of just, you know, steps.
Yeah, they're setting aside some civic money for that, for the conversion.
Yep.
We just have to do a little plan.
All right, very good. There's no other announcements, so obtain a motion to adjourn.
Motion, second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. All right, see you in a few weeks.
Enjoy the prayer.
Yes, enjoy the prayer.